I'm gonna call this meeting to order with Holiday Island City Planning Commission. A meeting of, uh, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, for the record, we're meeting at a special time, ten a.m. Because of a conflict this afternoon. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dumas here, Mr. Owen.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Food.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Pittman.
Here.
All present.
Alright. And I guess I'm a member of the commission.
Yeah, you call it your orders, you're here.
Alright, I'll declare a quorum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda as soon as.
Can we make a motion, Linda seconded it, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have minutes from the public hearing of February fourteenth and the regular meeting of February fourteenth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Linda made a motion to approve both the minutes from both, uh, the hearing and the meeting. I seconded it, any discussion?
Yeah, I have one typo on the, uh, regular meeting minutes.
Okay.
On page one on the new business, um, second paragraph.
Okay.
It's a resolution allowed red. By Dumas.
Okay.
I'm assuming he may not allow.
Okay. I'll make that change.
That's it.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, uh, then, uh, all, all in favor?
If we have another motion, we can just go to the, to approve it.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'm back on track. My glasses must be dirty. Alright, uh, no reports of any, um, standing committees or special committees at this time. No old business, moving on to new business, I'm gonna turn it over as usual to, uh, Mr. Dumas.
Okay, the first thing that I have on, um, this list of things to review is to look at some ACA statutes, Arkansas statutes that are relevant to today's meeting. And, uh, start with, uh, fourteen fifty-six, four twelve. And it's the municipal planning statute, part of the fifty-six series. And in this section, uh, C, let's see, section D, no, section E. Implementation of plans in order to promote, regulate, and control development and to protect the various elements of plans commissioned after adoption of the appropriate plans is provided may prepare and transmit to the body such ordinances and regulations as deemed necessary to carry out the intent of the plan. And remember, the intent of our plan was to, uh, support what we can in the covenants and adopt, uh, the unit block and lots and all the things that has been done before us. After adoption and filing of the provided plan, no public way, ground, or open space, building, structure, publicly or privately owned, public utility line, or, and it goes on and on and on. It basically says that it has to conform with the plan and it has to have our approval. I didn't highlight in this document, but in paragraph G, under three, it says referral to bodies responsible land acquisitions. It talks about, a lot about public things, but there's a phrase right in the middle here. The ore map streets shall be privately developed. Then the next line, it says, or the reserved area, we assign about properties that make the city as reserved. Now, in the very last sentence in that G, however, it may be enforced only in cases where regulations governing the development subdivision land do not apply. So, there's an exception there that we may have to address someday, but it's not perfect what we're talking about today. In ordinance, or in ACA four seventeen, I thought it was important just to remind us and everyone that, uh, we've, after we adopt our plans, we control the development of land by, uh, things that, well, we have the responsibility to control the development of lands, provide access to lots and parcels, extensions and provisions of utilities, subdividing lands into lots and blocks, and the parcels of land resulting in the need for access and utilities. So, our responsibility, I think, as a city, Planning Commission, is to set aside those plans. We're not responsible for paying for those things or ensuring that they're done, but we have to make provisions for it in our regulations or in adopting of people's development plans. In the B section, the regulations controlling the development of land may establish and provide the minimum requirements. Information to be included on the plat, filed for record, design and layout of the subdivision, including the standards, those right of ways, the street grades. All those things are what we need to have in our, uh, regulations that tell them, them being the developers, what they need to do. And it gives us permission in this statute to do that. Further down in that, I, I made a pink because I think that's most relevant for today. Regulations may govern lots or parcel splits, which is the dividing of any existing lot or parcel into two or more lots or parcels. No need or other instrument of transfer shall be accepted by the county recorder or record unless the deed or other instruments of transfer is to a lot or parcel platted and on file or accompanied with a plat approved by the commission. And then the number four is why we're here today. Regulations may, or regulations shall establish the procedure to be followed to secure plat approval by the commission. Currently, our regulations don't have any procedures for approving plat approvals. They're missing. And again, then, at the bottom of this, in C, is relevant. Within the area, within the area within which the municipality intends to exercise its territorial jurisdiction is indicated on the planning area map, the county recorder shall not accept any plat of record without the approval of the planning commission. So that's directing them that they have authority to refuse something that someone brings them. When, uh, Dan and I were in the office, uh, we, I suggested you can't accept these plats, these splits that people are doing, she says, if somebody brings me the Ramis Crapie recipe to file against the plat, I have to file it. So, she's of the opinion, anybody brings her something, she has to file it. This says she can't, once we have our ducks in a row.
Yeah, and we need to get that, you know, ironed out with, uh, you know, with the county. And, uh, I don't, I guess at this point, I'm not sure who we would approach as far as, uh, getting that nailed down.
Well, as soon as we approve our regulations that give us that procedure in form, then we, uh, take our regulations and our ordinance that approves it to the officiant that's in charge of the report, whoever it is.
Do we have a regulation yet that, that says we intend to exa- exercise territorial jurisdiction?
Yes, we did it at the planning area map.
So we did, did that?
Yeah.
And then it's filed with the clerk.
So that's not enough to prevent her from.
No, we have to have procedures, that number four.
We'll see.
We have to establish the procedure to be followed to secure plot approval. And then in four nineteen, it's just going a little bit further, it's a subject that we may have to address someday. It's not in today's discussion, but that, uh, following the adoption and filing of the master street plan, the legislative body upon recognition of the commission may enact ordinances providing for the control of entry into any of the major streets and highways shown in the plan. So, we would, uh, pass ordinances to say, uh, this is gonna be a, a stoplight or, uh, you can't put a road right here because of whatever feature we decide is a commission to recommend in the city council. But we can control access to the roads. And we do that in some of our regulations already, saying you have to have a paved driveway or you have to have a driveway of a certain length, or we talk about, uh, lots being contiguous on the same street. So there's some references that this statute gives us that authority to do that. In my reading. I'm not an attorney, but learning more than I should.
So will that take an amendment to the regulations that we just passed, or is it a separate ordinance?
As far as access to property, it would be in the process of approving, approving someone's plat drawing.
So it would be a condition of approval?
Yeah, we, you know, we'd have to say that you, you can't put it there, or you can put it there.
Got it.
Excuse me? Then in, uh, fifty-six, four nineteen, this, I just ripped it up. It's controlled entry to the streets. Okay, four twenty-one. Uh, this was, uh, still planning commission. The legislative body may join any individual or property owner who is in violation of the planning ordinance, prevent and correct violation. I've always had that understanding, but I was pleased to discover number two. An individual agreed by, aggrieved by violation of the ordinance may request an injunction. So it says in the statutes, if I don't like what my neighbor's doing and there's a, um, ordinance in place, I can personally go after that, that party as an individual. Much like our covenants say, we have to go after our neighbors if we don't agree with it. So this gives our, gives the property owners, uh, property rights or grievance rights in the courts.
And they can also force us to take action.
Yes.
That would be the, their recourse if we didn't, if we were not taking action, right?
So it's, I thought it's good that we've been reminded that, uh, you know, we're held accountable by that statute. Okay, next on the list was just to go through what we've done already in our planning commission work and our city approval. Now highlighting some excerpts from our, our current ordinances, our current regulations. And in section one point oh-three, um, we did this to promote in accordance with, prevent future needs, safety, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare, the students of, of students, citizens of Holiday Island. And it's for the orderly growth and development, for the protection and character and the stability of residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, environmental sensitive areas. And what's appropriate, best use of the land for the helpful, convenient distribution of population and good civic design and arrangement. That's our purpose that we have stated in our current ordinance. And then this section talks, uh, in three. It's the intent and desire of the city to preserve the available declaration of reservations to the limits of the law placed upon municipalities in Arkansas and to the extent that these declarations or reservations remain relevant. The city intends to develop and adopt ordinances and regulations to work in conformity with available declaration of reservations to the extent possible. Just wanna be sure, are we still at the same point? We've been doing this for two years plus? Still have the same goal?
Yes.
Don't need to change the purpose or reevaluate it?
I see, no worries.
Okay. In section two oh-two definitions, under, there's a definition in manufactured housing that says, calls it subdivided into lots. Then there's a definition or plan in zoning that talks about subdivision regulations in two separate places. And just to make note, we do not have subdivision regulations in our documents. So that's a subject for today's meeting. And further on, in section six oh-seven, parcels and lots. Whenever any parcel is subdivided into lots, and the parcel that has been subdivided, so these are phrases that are in our current policies, that are, are regulations that do not have text associated with it, so that's why we're here today.
Do we have a definition for subdivision?
I can look.
That would only be relevant to areas outside of the city limits.
No, it's, it's for taking a parcel divided into four lots also, that's a subdivision. Well, it's subdividing.
Well, I understand we need something for subdividing parcels, but I don't see where we have that. We need anything with a subdivision.
Okay. Well, um, the way that this text that we've been following calls that, they call planned unit development, a P U D. So that would be like taking a, a large chunk of property outside the city limits and developing it.
Bring up P U D.
A planned unit development?
Yeah, bring the definition of that too. So we don't have a definition for subdivisions?
We don't have a defined for planned unit development.
Shouldn't we have, shouldn't we have that, what we've got?
We will if we've got the regulations.
Okay, because we'll have to be using those words, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes, and, and in the, well, I think it's jumping ahead, but, uh, in the Tonti Town document, uh, this one? No, this one, no.
So they have used that word.
Uh, it's been all, one must be in my two. Ah, I don't have it pulled up quickly, but it's an eighty-three page, here it is. This is, this is the thirteen pages. And there are, uh, definitions in the original.
There's a general description, yeah.
Yeah, that's, this is an outline, so it's jumping in our text, but that's fine. Down here is general description.
Yeah, to, to my thinking, subdividing a lot, uh, and creating a subdivision is the same thing, it's only a matter of scale. So, we have to deal with everything from the smallest of subdivisions to the largest possible or, you know, what we would think would be likely.
So that's a working definition for, uh, how we approach this task?
Yes, and it's reserved in our document as a planned unit development district. And all the text that's with that. Okay, so, we're doing the, so that, that takes us back to where we were. And, this is oh-two, parcels. Okay, so seven dot fifty is in our regulations as marked reserved, called the planned unit development district. And I've copied from the document, thirteen pages, an outline, just so you can see what the material's all about. And we can go through that, um, as far as the discussion, I can just kind of play through the rest of this introductory document before we get into the work of it. Anyway, that's what these two pages are in, seven dot fifty is the outline and all that text. And then there's a section in our regulations, sections thirty-one through eighty-nine are marked reserved. I think this is the best place to plug in the development and subdivision regulations that's referred to back in that, uh, definition under the city planning commission of what we're going to enforce. Now, in the Tonti Town document, it's eighty-three pages of text. And it's an entire separate section in theirs. We've, uh, used their section one fifty-three to work on our planning and zoning. Their subdev- their subdivision regulations is their section one fifty-two. I'm gonna do your own research, right? I have copies of that file if you'd like me to send it to you. My recommendation in that is just to adopt the incidental subdivision section. Leaving all the rest of it as reserved text. So, we can review that.
Say that again.
My recommendation is to adopt only the incidental subdivision, where I've numbered it forty-one, dot zero through forty-one dot five. Leave everything else for now at least reserved. Did not tackle the eighty-three pages of text, as though we've got this other stuff done.
I agree. I don't think we're gonna have any large scale developments here in the, you know, we, if you're trying. There's probably only one or two, um, properties that would be large enough to even do any development if, you know, somebody wanted to.
Well, I'm looking down the road and, and it's, uh, the whole issue of all this land that's, uh, golf courses, someday someone said, and I said, we're gonna abandon one or both. Turn that into some sort of subdivision. So, that's also property within our city limits.
What about, there was an area that's within our territorial jurisdiction also?
Right.
Yeah, we have, oh.
They wanna create an industrial park or a.
Or they wanna put a, a manufactured home park or whatever.
Yeah. Although that, yeah, I'm not quite sure yet what that, you know, territorial jurisdiction means. To me, it's.
That's within a one or three mile?
I, I know, but, but it, you know, it says that you have territorial jurisdiction, but it almost also says that you don't have veto power over anything, you know? I, I don't know what, you know, if somebody wanted to do something, I don't know that we could stop them.
We got that.
We, we might be able to impose some standards if they wanna tie into our sewer and water or something like that.
That's the value of that, having that.
I mean, you got an area that's along county line road that's pretty half hazard, but I don't know how you would step in there and regulate that. I mean, that's a subdivision, I guess, I don't know what it is.
What about that, for instance, the area that's along the creek that's undeveloped, uh, on, off of Woodsdale, I should build four one eight seven.
You mean the, the part that's outside of the city limits? Yeah.
That always has a trash pile up there?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, somebody could come in there and, and put in a trailer park or something, but if they didn't want to use any city services and if it didn't have any impact on the city, I don't know what we'd be able to stop them.
Wouldn't we want to try to stop if we could have done?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we could try.
I mean, that, that's part of the city.
No, I'm talking about the park that's outside the city, as you go four one eighty-seven, for the city.
Our city center, that, I mean.
No, no, I was talking about the other side.
The city water and center go out that far?
That's another point.
No, I don't know how we would stop it.
But I mean, it could, if somebody wanted to do a development out there, they could.
The whole area is.
The, uh, it is within the regulations for suburban improvement district to extend services outside of the district. If they're chose to.
So for, for today, we have, uh, we have the two sections of seven dot fifty. That is the planned unit development, and the text that I put in the work document, I believe it's thirteen pages long. And we go through that. We also have what I recommend, the incidental subdivision piece in the new section dot forty-one, which is only three pages long. I think they both need to be done in order to meet what we've already outlined in our current statutes and to give us the, that protection, if you will, or that, that privilege to be a part of, uh, planning of what properties are all about, whether they be developed. So. Now, how you wanna approach that, if you, let's just dive into one of these two sections?
Sure.
Then let's, uh, see how far we can get in, in the section, uh, forty-one, is the incidental subdivisions. I believe it's the last few pages of the attachment I gave you.
And you said this was, uh, captured from the Tonti Town?
Yes. And I've taken that, the text right out of there and I've only made a few edits in. So, up on the screen, I've gone through this, uh, these last four pages that I didn't have any highlights when I distributed it. So, so, go through it then. First place that I find any changes in, in lot split, we need to maybe include the words parcel split and or parcel. Lot split includes first split in which lot or parcel located in, blah, blah, blah. Do we? Because we use, we use the word parcels and lots separately in Holiday Island for different purposes. And in their definition, they have minor subdivisions, lot splits, and I added parcel splits, or certain other dividing adjustment of land. Rather than leaving ambiguous, just insert the words, I don't think it'll hurt. Then I have a question in my mind of, uh, where rights of way or utility easements are being dedicated to the city. That's in their text. I don't know how that really applies to us or if it should apply to us.
And why would you wanna restrict it to, that sentence, to just those kinds of divided lots?
The restriction, I think, when they say it's, uh, these properties are dedicated to the city, they become city property, I'm guessing.
Well, rights of way.
Right.
Yeah.
Or is it the right of way and easements are, are dedicated to the city?
Yeah.
Maybe language is okay, but I just question because of that word dedicated, I don't understand that legal term.
It's, you know, when, when the, uh, when a developer, um, develops his plan for, files his plot plan for his subdivision, um, from what I've seen in, um, in the past, plot plans for Holiday Island, um, there will be a note on the, on the plot plan that says that the, the streets, in the case of Holiday Island, a lot of times it says, uh, that the, that the streets are being dedicated, the street right of ways are being dedicated to the district, uh, who will in turn, you know, sometimes it says who will in turn, uh, dedicated to the public or something like that. So, um, that's kind of a process we're going through with, uh, you know, when the city takes over the street, you know? They don't, they don't dedicate, they, they don't, they don't transfer the title to, of that property to the city. They only dedicate the right of way.
Okay.
And I, you know, I think that, you know, you know, dedicating the right of way and ownership, I think, are used interchangeably a lot of times in conversation, but legally, you know, I'm not at all convinced that they're the same thing. You know?
I'm just wondering if they're, they're trying to say with that phrase that a plot plan must include the dedication of certain easements. Because the way it's worded to me says, the only, the only lot splits that this definition applies to are those that have dedicated right of ways. But there could be a lot split without a dedicated right of way.
Uh, yes.
In which case, is that something you want or not? I mean, wouldn't a lot split have to have a dedicated easement? In our scenario of where we live? Wanted to have utilities?
You could, or you could or could not require a utility easement, depending on where, you know, what you're doing. If you had a lot that's laid along the line, you know, along, or you had a parcel that's laying along dotted road and everything and your, your easements are already there.
Well, yeah, you're talking about they're already there, but. But if they're already there and they acquire the property, I mean, you're assuming they're dedicated to the city already, but they may not be. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just wondering why that phrase qualifies the previous sentence.
I'm not, not sure that that needs to be in there. About the dedicated to the city.
It seems like it ought to be someplace else in how you approve, uh, based upon the approval of the law or the approval of the plan or something like that, to me. I don't think it belongs in the definition.
Utilities don't, they don't belong to the district currently, do they?
I do.
I thought they belong, they're there for the utilities.
And then the easement give the right of the utility to do work on that property, sustainable on the district?
I don't think that the, I don't think easements are owned by anybody. Easements are just a restriction on the use of the property.
Right.
But dedication, uh, that, that assumes responsibility for. If something is dedicated to the city, then the city, um, in, in the future is responsible for that. And, you know, that probably goes back to what I was saying about, about it being recorded on the plot plan. If, if somebody, let's say on a large scale subdivision, um, let, let's roll back the clock and Tom Dees was developing the park up there. And he came to the city council with a big plot plan that had all these streets in there. And on the, on that plot plan, it said that upon completion, the street right of way will be dedicated to the city. And if we, the city, approve that plot plan, we are accepting that dedication. So, um, but in this particular case, you know, it's more likely in Holiday Island that somebody's gonna subdivide a lot that's already on a street, uh, uh, you know, on an existing street, like Terry Presley did down on Fairway. You know, he bought that property and allotted it into, you know, three or four or five lots. There was no dedication of streets necessary because he didn't create any streets. So. I would just take that, I would just strike that about, um, where rights of way and or utility easements are being dedicated to the city.
Yeah, I think that's a separate conversation. I think.
Right now, just take this part right out.
Separate element.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll do that. You're gonna leave, well, they still have to change easements, right?
Well, it says, uh, it's applicability. It says a lot split in which a lot or parcel located in an already existing recorded subdivision is divided into three lots or less period. Property cannot be divided into more than thirty separate tracks within a five-year period.
And I, I also object to the three lots of us.
Really?
Well, the only objection I can have is specifying the number of lots. I think it ought to be tied to the, uh, restrictions that are already in the units, um, about the minimum size of a lot.
Well, we have that in our regulations already, that we have minimum lot sizes and frontages.
Right. So I wouldn't choose, what if, what if the parcel was big enough for five?
You're not talking about.
Well, then it would not be in this section. It would, it wouldn't be a minor or an incidental subdivision that fall into the planned unit development.
Right. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to visualize what's going on with, in, in you, in, uh, in number one there. Maybe that, maybe that needs to stay in there because if, if I own a, if, if I own a bunch of land at the end of a private road. And I wanna develop that into, I wanna build six houses back there. But in order to do that, I have to, I don't wanna have to maintain the road forever to get to those six houses. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to dedicate, uh, my private road to the city. That is a different situation than, I don't know of any exact instance of that right now. But, um, but I think that that's probably the intent. Number two states where, where, uh, it does not require dedications. That would be more like we're thinking of somebody subdividing, you know, that buying, buying a big parcel and subdividing it. But they don't have to create any streets or anything.
Where's it say in the object?
It just says it does not require dedication of, um, reservations, changes in alignment of easements, or right of ways, or extension of utilities.
Why would you, if you're subdividing a lot? We are talking lots or we're talking parcels?
The sentence is lot, tract or parcel.
One says lot. There is one says lot.
Yeah, so maybe I've gotten ahead of myself by putting parcel up there and just let number two take care of the parcel piece.
Maybe.
Maybe we're trying to hard, trying to hard use, um, county town terminology.
Right, right.
Maybe we could just call lot split, you know, existing lots or parcels, you know, par- parcel, lots or parcels that, that border existing, uh, streets.
I mean, you, I don't know many thing in Holiday Island. It's not already, parcels are fairly small and they're on loops.
I can show you one.
Parcel C, um, uh, unit eighteen, unit nineteen.
I can show you one. It's right here. This one.
Yeah.
It's got stakes and ground for four lots, and I think two of them are too small, but I don't have.
And what street is that one on?
Corner of Shields and Apple Lisa.
Oh, that one, yeah.
And there's a.
And one right across the street has stakes in it too.
I know, but they're still, you still got your room right of ways and everything. You're already there.
Right, but we're not about lot splits.
Lots, they're, they're lots or parcels. So you're not gonna have any.
And then if, if the planning commission was involved with what Danny did, or Dan just talked about a few minutes ago, I would have had words about it, in my opinion, of that, uh, corner of Shields and Fairway. There was one, two, three lots, four lots created. This piece of ground right here is abandoned. This used to be, this used to be one big parcel. It got subdivided, three in one, and this piece in this corner is abandoned. It's not named. It's not owned by anybody.
You mean it's, I said green spikes?
No, Terry Presley subdivided that one prior to his new plot plans. He just excluded it.
Does he own it?
And the county accepted it, and they shouldn't have.
Or, or the county is messed up and just haven't put the record in there. We don't know, but according to this record, it's a weird lot.
Well, it's on the nice corner too. Could be very usable or something.
These are the issues that we have. Without having these regulations in place, we can't tell the county. You can't accept that.
Gotcha.
So back to our text.
Go to the top, rock, rocky top, there's about six acres. And, and build animal farm if they ever break that up.
I think I'm gonna take the word parcel out of this now that we rethink this because of what we have down here in the next one. I don't think it'd be in this text.
I think, I think this, this is one of the bigger issues we had before.
So.
You know, I, I think, so that it applies, so this section, this incidental subdivision is the applicability. We have two kinds of lot splits, ones where there's dedications and ones where there's not. So I think having them both in there is probably appropriate.
And the, the number three is relevant only in the, only in the fact that somebody at some time decided that more than, more than three is no longer incidental.
Right? So I, I think you would default to what's in the planned unit development if you're doing more than three lots. May have looked for that specific count to see if that's in there.
Well, the word lot is also a minor subdivision.
Right. So this section ordinance applies to minor subdivision, which a lot, tract or parcel is divided into three lots or less.
It is not required.
Right. And cannot be divided more than three lots in a five-year period. It's also, um, an incidental, it's also an incidental adjustment if we have a property line adjustment.
What's the reasoning behind the five-year period?
Uh, probably just to tone down the activity. I don't know.
Slow down the, slow down the pro, the turnover and changes?
Yeah, I don't know. At one time, this ordinance, I left their, their, uh, edits in there. They started in twenty thirteen and updated certain portions of this piece several times. I don't know. I didn't go back to track why and when they changed any part of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe if I own three acres and I come to the planning commission and I say, I wanna replot this into three one-acre lots. Uh, and we say, okay, we don't want, and then he sells those. We don't want somebody coming back, you know, in, in six months and saying, I wanna take my one acre and subdivide it into four quarter acre lots. But I don't know that, that, I, I guess I'm not sure why you would want to discourage that.
Well, we could strike it for now and if it becomes a problem, put it back in later. But it's always be closing the gate after the fact.
Putting a time limit like that on something, you know, I, I think is more designed to force the developer to think a little bit more long-term. You know, that, um, okay, you know, keep in mind that whatever you're doing now has gotta hold you for five years. So whatever you wanna do in the next five years, you better be telling us right now. Think it through.
So let's relieve it. Now, what if someone comes to us with a plan, says, here's my ten-year plan or whatever, it includes this change in three years? That'd be part of the plan. We would have a variance that we could approve. Even though it's in the text, it can still be approved as a variance. So it doesn't necessarily stop it. It just makes it come to a different level of, of awareness.
Yeah. Yeah, from a plot and span going through it, probably.
It gets you away to permit, if not worse.
Yeah, you can say no.
Right, because it's not written in the regulation.
It's not permitted otherwise, right, by right.
I don't think it'd hurt, I don't think it'd hurt anything.
So leave it in.
Right.
I, I agree. But does it tire our fans if we want to allow somebody to do it in a shorter?
No, because that would come to a, uh, public hearing and a variance request on this regulation.
And then have to have a good reason. Okay.
Yeah, any reg, any regulation we have can be overridden by a variance if it's approved. Your wheels are turning, Dan. Any more?
Uh, no, I'm sure we're not gonna come up with the final wording in this meeting here. We're all gonna need to chew on this a little bit and try to imagine some real-life scenarios where this would apply.
And finally, then, this incidental is also for correction of the plan. If there's a, a legal description or describing, or I think that's the text of point A to point B to see, those areas are corrected. Don't require anything else. So, okay. So that's how this all applies to incidental subdivisions. And again, I recommend this to be the new section forty-one.
Okay, so what, where, where, where does the, the subdividing, if we have more than three lots in place?
That would be under the planned unit development. Go into the section seven fifty that we have to work on, those thirty-three pages.
Yeah, that's the, that's the chewing on part that I'm still wrestling with is that three or less because, you know, we, we know of.
We've got it.
Be one or two situations right now where it's likely going to be more than, more than, um.
You know, I, I thought the three lots or less, we, we just talking about a lot, lot split.
Parcel splits, yeah.
No, no, but number one just says lots. It doesn't, it doesn't have parcel or tracks.
But then number two says lot, tract or parcel.
Yes, I think three, three is not, is not gonna get it done there.
I think both one and two should say, uh, um, lots and parcels.
Okay, put it back in.
The only difference I can see is whether you re- require easements or not. So, I mean, it's a bit.
So why do we have two sections?
Yeah, I mean, number two is more of a, of a lot split than number one because number, number one, you're, you're actually, you know, having to set up additional easements, right of ways. So I don't, you know, I don't know.
What is a tract? Is there a definition of tract that, that the county uses?
I don't know.
Isn't everything a parcel?
No, a tract of land is, is, you know, is an acre or something.
Except lots.
I don't know how.
But within, but, but within the confines of Holiday Island, everything is either a lot or a parcel.
Right.
But I, I thought even outside of Holiday Island, things were parcels in the county.
No, they're, they're tracts.
Well, they're called parcels in the county tax records.
Really?
Yeah. That's why I'm saying, I'm wondering if that term pertains to county, to their county.
Right, I, you know, I would, for our purposes.
Shouldn't we know what a tract is versus a parcel?
I don't know. We could drop tracks.
We, we may wanna, we may wanna cover that in our definitions, but there are, there are pieces of dirt in Holiday Island that are undefined. You know, Lynn pointed one out before, or at least data scout shows it as being undefined. What I, yeah, I, I keep going back.
It's not in the records.
Yeah.
They're signed.
I, I, I keep going back to what Tom Dees said, told me one time, is that, you know, the developer starts out with five thousand acres. And he, he sells off this and what's left, he still owns. And then he sells off this and what's left, he still owns. And then he sells off this and what's left, he still owns. But he doesn't, he, he doesn't replat that original five thousand acres every time he carves off a piece and sells it.
It's a new plan, I guess.
Yeah, so, um, and, and I think that's exactly how all of these little chunks end up being unidentified in, you know, in data scout and at the county. It's what's left. And, uh, so I, I think the, putting the word tract in there is probably a good idea because it's kind of a catch-all term for something that's not defined as a parcel or a lot.
I don't know. I would.
But it, it was once a parcel of some sort. Had a record in county as a part, with a parcel identifier at some point.
Yeah, the whole five thousand acres.
So why wouldn't that unplanned piece revert back and still have that same old parcel number on it?
You never had a parcel number.
Because, uh, record keeping. Because nobody brought a piece of paper to them and said, this is the drawing of. Because nobody brought a piece of paper to them and said, this is the drawing of what's left.
Maybe that's it, indefinite stretch of land.
Indefinite meaning kind of undefined.
Indivine, yeah.
Take a lot, just a lot split and a minor subdivision are two different.
You think they're separate? A minor subdivision? It's different than a lot split? Well, we're saying incidental subdivisions includes these four things.
Yeah.
That's what we're saying in this text.
I think you need both lots and minor.
The most likely thing we're going to have to deal with is simple lot splits. Somebody's got a one and a half acre lot called parcel K. And they want to divide in two and build two houses. There's that piece of property across from, across Park Drive from, uh, Mountain Bird Coffee. It's one point three acres. There's, I've talked to at least three prospective buyers for that already that want to, uh, divide it into two or three lots and build, build something on it. And, uh, I don't know if they want too much for the land. There's nothing ever actually materializes. But, um.
I don't know.
There's a pretty good chunk of land up on top of Rocky Top.
Well, he was just citing.
Somebody could probably subdivide some.
He's talking about Rocky Top there.
Yeah. There's six acres up there. And the guy that locked on these are.
Yeah, there's that whole park, that whole, that whole section south of, uh, right.
I, I, I'm just having trouble with the word lots.
I don't know that, I don't know what that looks like topographically. It may not be developed.
Well, except for the dedication.
But that, what you have highlighted there, that's almost undoubtedly going to be subdivided someday.
We'll put some dedication. That's the only difference in park.
But you're not, you're not saying a minor subdivision.
Yeah, I talked about that, that.
I agree, that's why I think it answers into the plan.
Whatever they do, they can't destroy the flow of water and they know that that's a catch base.
So Ken's raising the point about, you know, taking a parcel and dividing it more than three lots. And I'm saying it needs to go into the plan unit development. Maybe we need to say that in this text. If it's more than that, then it doesn't apply and planning and development is what it applies to. That's directed there.
But that puts us on, but we don't have a planned unit development.
We don't have the whole thing done, right? All we're going to talk about is, well, we, we will, if we finish the thirteen pages.
Yeah.
Doing this first.
To me, to me, planned unit development means you're putting in streets and sewer water.
Okay.
And, and that's different from just splitting a couple of lots.
That's true.
So I can build some houses.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then maybe we just enhance the text that we have by saying without approval for the planning commission.
Yeah. Most.
Cannot be divided in more than three lots if I.
I changed the three to four and.
Changes three to four.
Yeah.
Lot splits in both places?
Yeah.
Not lots split?
Not more than four?
Yeah.
See, I'm thinking a lot is not that key.
I'm thinking about a lot in.
Right.
How we're going to put a lot into three?
For sure.
Well, this lot we were talking about when we first started, this parcel K, is big enough that if someone wants to buy it and build a house on it, it's one lot. It could be split diagonally, made two lots.
I think he's saying that's not a lot, it's a parcel though.
Yeah, okay. But when we're done with the process, it will be a lot. We're going to sign a unit block lot to it.
That, the one in the lots that Lynn just had highlighted before, that has a unit block and lot number. That is a lot.
That whole piece, that's bigger.
That whole piece has got a unit lot.
Give me all three, one oh three, one one.
So it, it's a huge lot. There's only one lot and one lot in that unit.
One oh three, dash one, dash one. So it's lot number one and block one of one oh three.
And that could easily be divided into four lots. How many acres is that?
Three point seven four acres.
Oh, that's, that's a perfect case, yeah. It's, it could be a lot.
Same thing with this piece over here on the other side of the same road.
Yeah. I've talked to, I've talked to numerous people about both of those properties. And I, I can only imagine that the price tag on the property is, is a hindrance to somebody doing something with them. Because they, that's, that's what they want to do.
This one's owned by James Leland and this one's owned by Robert Evans. We're on the tax record.
James Leland, I think is, uh, is, um, who was the guy that used to do all the loans here and then he died?
James Leland Jones, James Jones?
Jimmy Jones. That's Jimmy Jones of the state owns that.
Okay.
And Robert Evans is on that, that was the.
He's trying to sell it.
Yeah.
But there, there is a, there's a concrete range ditch going through there. So you almost have to go, uh, divide it in order to, to build anything on it.
So I'm saying we have to be careful with, you know, defining the lots and if we're going to say they can take a lot and not as a size and split it in three, I think we have to have some kind of size limit on the lot.
We do. We have that in our regulations already. We have frontage, we have street frontage limitations.
Okay.
And if, if somebody wants to divide the lot, we would have to decide what the zoning would be for those lots, which ties you into size prescriptions and stuff.
And then you want to use the word tracts in the sense.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so because.
It's an undefined piece.
Okay.
Never again.
One they're done building though, it will then be defined.
Well, it has to be defined and plotted and filed before they can get a building permit.
Gotcha.
I think at some point, the planning commission here is going to have to take the bull by the horns a little bit and go into data scout and find all those properties that aren't defined in data scout and get with the county, find out what they are and, uh, and get them defined if, um, you know, if nobody else is going to do it. You know, the county doesn't seem to be, um, yeah, they don't, well, they, they may not have the authority to do it.
Well, wouldn't I ask, are they getting any county taxes off of this lot in the records?
Yeah, I would guess not, yeah.
Well, I just, I, this is, this issue right here is very relevant. This lot, parcel split. I, when I think of, of subdivision, I, I think of a, I think of area. I can't see, there might be a couple of those. The animal farm is twenty-five acres. And that, that, that would be a, I, I think you designate that and then Rocky Top could end up being a new subdivision. And I try to do something with it. The other ones are, are just minor acting.
That property you have highlighted there right now, that, um, that, that guy's, he built that shed up there without a building permit.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we sat down and talked to him about that. He plans on building, someday building more houses along, um, the northern.
Pleasant Ridge?
Pleasant Ridge, yeah. So he plans on subdividing that someday.
That's the animal farm property.
Yep, twenty-two acres. And that's not, that's developable. I mean, the topography there's not protected.
That's, is that within the city limits?
Yeah, that's your.
City limits is right here.
Even though it's not in Hy-Sit?
It is in Hy-Sit.
It's in Hy-Sit.
Really?
Yeah, the city limits goes right across here, up here, this little notch, right across the bottom of that lot and on itself.
Well, how come Roxanne's property, which is on Pleasant Ridge, on the right-hand side?
Because that's not, that's not in.
It's not in Hy-Sit.
It's not in Hy-Sit.
So why is that property in Hy-Sit if she's not in Hy-Sit?
Royster's property is further down Pleasant Ridge.
It's up here.
Right there.
Yeah.
Oh, it's there. Gotcha. Gotcha.
The city limits.
That's right, okay. So all that area, that big hill.
There's, there's, I haven't, I looked at buying that. See that big area behind there? It says Hy-Sit. It's like seventeen acres. I was, I was trying to buy that, but there's no place to be glad enough to build that.
There's a lot of downhill in there.
Yeah.
And you got, bit behind the fire station, you got another big thirty acres.
I think it's unlikely that, that there's going to be a lot of development in those areas as lo- as long as there's three thousand available lots in Holiday Island, haven't been built on yet.
You've got road, you've got road utilities.
The possibility is there. I think that, that is the most likely thing that we're going to have to deal with is that somebody that owns some acreage right now is going to want to carve out bits and pieces of it and sell it off to build a house and, uh, I'm not too worried about big subdivisions right now.
You wouldn't have to do any development, just subdivide it so you can sell the lots.
Right.
Why else just parcel it out or lot it out?
And he could still keep, you know, how many acres is that?
This is twenty-two point eight acres.
Yeah, I mean, he could carve off, you know, three or four acres to build houses and keep the rest. He'd still have a,
Yeah.
A, a nice big chunk of land to have goats or something. The guy that built that, that's Ken's neighbor.
You can't have goats without.
Yeah, don't, don't go there.
That's Ken's neighbor and he built that shed up there. He doesn't have sewer or water or anything to it. He just built it because he's got so many toys he had to have a place to put them. And his wife won't move here.
I think a lot split, uh, would be three or less, you know, right away. And then the next minor subdivision, you don't have a restriction and it required a dedication.
Well, anyway, let's get back.
What's the logic of that?
What Ken said?
Yeah, what Ken said. What's the logic behind that?
Well, one's a very simple.
One's the big one. It doesn't require any dedication and the small one does require anything.
The, you know, the large one may or may not be required, but because a lot split, it's true lot split.
Well, it says does not require.
I know, but number one says it requires, you know.
Right. I think it's a valid question to ask, what is the logic behind that?
Well, in one, it says located in an already existing recorded subdivision. And if number two.
You're not going to require it. If it's already recorded and, and, you know, it, it, you know, you're not going to do the, it's, 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 easements. I mean, that's, you know, it's a, a simple lot.
In other words, doesn't that make sense?
Minor subdivision to me means you're, you know, you're going to do some development work, but you're going to have this. You're replating any easements possibly, but you may or may not. That, I, I'm having trouble with the, it, it's kind of like number one should be, um, tracking parcels.
Number one is a subdivision, twenty-two acres, and he's plotted it out with three lots or less. And we've already approved it. And he comes in one day and says, okay, now I want to break it up into more lots. So it's a minor incidental subdivision. It applies. This section applies. We don't have to do any more than this.
Yeah, but there it says we have to have right away and minor subdivision says it doesn't. I mean, to me, they're backwards. They're, they're.
In title?
Yeah, the minor subdivision.
No, the fact that the, the lot split requires easements and the subdivision doesn't.
It's a recorded subdivision where rights of ways or easements are being dedicated. It's already there in number one.
No, it says are being dedicated. To me, it means it's just.
Right, they're being dedicated by the subdivision that's recorded.
Yeah, they're already in place.
They're already been approved. They're already on an approved subdivision.
Well, so why if a minor subdivision, which is a parcel, does not require dedication, vacation, reservation, it, you agree? That's one to me where you actually would be doing easements and possibly roads.
Well, it's minor if it does not require these things. All, all we're trying to say is what is applicable? This, this section is, uh, incidental subdivisions is the whole title and this section applicability, this applies if.
So can you think of a case in which it wouldn't require dedications?
Well, yeah, a lot that has already exists that's large and someone wants to cut it into two.
But you're talking about a minor, minor subdivision paragraph.
It's in which a lot is divided into three or less, does not require dedications, vacations.
Oh, because it already exists?
Yeah, because it already exists.
Okay. Um, it's, it's, the wording gets me. A lot split, a lot split and subdivision, I don't know.
Okay.
A lot split means they're already there.
Right, it's a lot split of a already existing recorded subdivision. And what we're, we're talking about something that doesn't exist in Holiday Island today. We don't have a subdivision sitting out there waiting to be developed.
Okay, but neither one of them are actually going to have additional. Okay. Does everybody else understand this, just me?
Okay.
There is one. So all we're doing is saying this is the definition of minor subdivision.
Yes, an incidental subdivision.
It's this situation that doesn't require any dedication.
Right.
The same situation that does require dedication is called a lot split. So you're just defining it.
No, the lots, the, the easements are already there, you're saying.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's just a way to define.
That's why it's minor. It's incidental.
Yeah.
Should we, in the, number one, we just said.
So number one, if you, if that was just said where rights of way and mutual are, are already dedicated, then I'm happy.
All right, here, just in number one, we just, the first two words, lot split, should that be lot slash parcel split?
If that's, and, and I think if it said that the rights of, easements and right of ways are already there, are already present, are already dedicated. No, you're, I, I, dedicated does not mean, an easement doesn't have to be dedicated. It can exist without being dedicated. Dedicated being, I'm here to take care of it. Still have an easement there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have an easement through my backyard, but they haven't been dedicated. A road would be dedicated, but an easement would exist to a utility company, doesn't have to be dedicated, did it? I think we're getting, maybe I'm getting hung up on the, on the language, but I, I, those are. The language is what's getting me.
Well, I'm, I'm seeing.
I mean, an easement can exist, and an easement can exist and be dedicated, those are two different things.
I see this language, are being dedicated, it's future tense of a recorded subdivision that's not yet done. It's been plotted, approved, and whatever, it's recorded, and in that plan, there's a dedication plan. And someone says, this plan that you already approved, I wanna divide this into a few more lots, that's a incidental subdivision. Right. Of that already approved subdivision. Everything else is in place, so the future tense are being dedicated is in that plan of that recorded subdivision. It's not because we're splitting it, now we're gonna have to dedicate some streets.
Well, I, excuse me, how would you, if you're gonna do a minor subdivision out, and you're gonna make it into three different ones, how would you not have to do, dedicate easement there? There, is it just not gonna have any?
No, the, the easement is already there on the subdivision plot plan, cause it says already existing recorded subdivision.
And it says does not require any dedication.
Where does it say it's already an existing subdivision?
First one.
First one, located in an already existing recorded subdivision.
No, it doesn't.
Reading one?
Are you reading two?
Two.
Going two.
Oh, two, I think you went to two.
Cause I'm asking, I would have saw it dedicated, you don't have to dedicate it, if it's already dedicated, or Atlanta, you're, you're, uh, they're just backwards, okay, go on. If you're all happy with it, I, 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 I just come through and try to think then.
I think they're both the same, except for the dedication part, right? That's the only difference.
Right.
Two says you don't require dedication, one says you do require dedication. That's the only difference.
And I'm not sure that that.
That's the difference in those definitions.
I, I'm not sure that that is even, I mean, why is that even, why, why do we even want all that language in there? How do we just say you can't, you can't, if, if, if your property is in a already existing subdivision, like, you can't divide it into four more, more than four lots?
Oh, because, there must be some reason they've created two definitions here with that.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to.
And there's got, the plot must thicken as you read on.
Or, or something.
Otherwise you'd only need one.
Or something happened in twenty-twenty or in twenty-two, where they changed the ordinance.
Yeah.
So it, it doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
Because the language was weak before they made the changes in twenty-twenty or twenty-two.
And they said they created a separate category with a tighter definition of something.
Or to make it easier, because the, the incidental is a whole lot easier process than a planned unit development.
I think we're gonna have to read further to figure out where these two situations apply.
Okay.
And what, what the difference in the governing of those two situations is based upon that decision.
And that information will be in the county town ordinances?
Well, that's what this is, it's a copy of the county town order.
So we have to.
That we're trying to modify and adopt. Okay, so the next section is about the application for approval. The only thing I see in there is I have to make sure the right references are pointed to. Is that's the only thing I saw a problem with?
Where'd you go to, Neil?
In the next section, one, did you do what you want? You didn't print it out?
I'll just read it from the start.
Read it out.
We're talking about the application or?
Yeah, the application for approval, I didn't see any notes or changes concerning, except for the reference. This point into one fifty-two, one fifteen through seventeen. And, just so you know, the one fifty-two is the planned unit development, that's the eighty-three pages, that's what section one fifty-two of their code is. So whatever we've come up with, may, this may have to be modified differently to fit what we're gonna have adopted. Cause we don't have plaid approval, I don't think that's something, yeah, we do in, in my suggested text, so it'd be a different section. Okay. Then the process for review and approval, they say goes to the planning department or city engineer, or hand city engineer, who are we gonna send it to?
Yeah, building inspector.
The planning commission.
It's kinda what I thought.
Yeah.
Because we don't have two, we don't have a department and engineer, it's gonna have to come to the planning commission. No, I, I didn't, uh. You don't have the highlight and stuff that. Yeah, I, I. Okay, so, make those guys out. So, the planning commission has needed, shall we do the lot splits?
You can scratch as needed, since it's only one entity doing the review anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, go, show them, you know.
All right. Planning department shall approve with conditions, again, that's a commission, right? Okay. I'll do a little cross-out later. And after formal approval by the planning commission? Well, then the building permit can't be issued, sure, probably right? And Carroll County rather than Washington County, I have inserted, I read through this text, I find just the clerk reference someplace, other places says you send it to recorder, I thought we should include clerk slash recorder. They both get documents from us. And I guess.
Is the clerk, is the circuit clerk an elected position?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I, I only ask because we were talking before about, you know, who do we have to go to, you know, if, if, the, if the clerk that we talked to said that they have to file Grandma's Cookie recipe if, if, if they're given, if she gets one, um, and we wanted to, uh, appeal that, who would we appeal to?
Right.
She's an elected official, I don't know who you'd appeal to.
Good morning. That's county clerk.
She's the county clerk.
Circuit clerk.
She's a judge.
Circuit clerk with me, the, um, Scott.
Yeah, that's for the judge, that's for the, this is for what?
Like, like the courthouse in Eureka Springs, County Doss is the county, used to be Ramona Wilson.
Yeah.
I, I forget who placed her.
So here, this whole procedure we set up, then talking about splitting lots, what about consolidating lots?
There is no text in the Arkansas statute that I can find about combining lots, I can't find a single sentence of combining lots, parcels, or tracts.
We need to do some of that out here.
That's an issue.
Well, I thought we, we covered when we say you can build a property that spans a property line, that's basically combine those lots. But not legally, it doesn't, you know, the, the, the plot of the plat doesn't change, but I can't find any statute about regulating combining lots. I spent a long time looking, trying to look at different keywords.
I think, personally, I think the process would be similar to splitting lots, that, you know, I own all seven or ten of these lots, and I wanna combine them into one property so that I can build a shopping center or something. And, uh, so I come to the planning commission with a, with a plan to re-plot, and we would, but, the, you know, the district would have to approve it because it impacts their tax base, the county would have to approve it because it affects their tax base, the school board would have to approve it because it affects their tax base.
How does it, now you need to better change. I mean, we did that, you know, assessment standpoint, but legality of, like, community church is built on eight lots. And all intents and purposes is one lot.
Is it still laid out as eight lots though?
But that's, you know, that is an issue, and it's never been resolved, huh? So you think we could have a, combining it within the same structure?
I think we'd have to get a legal opinion on, on doing that.
I mean, it's almost as big an issue as splitting, uh, because Holiday Island was laid out, where we would never, you don't have any place for public buildings or, or, or commercial properties, I mean, it, it's set up on houses, and are a bunch of damn thirty-foot lots along this street here, which.
Which were subdivided at one point in time.
No, they're thirty-eight or thirty-foot lots.
You think they were plotted that way?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, they're plotted that way.
And we wrote it, you know, we wrote it.
And unless they're.
Regulation that, you know.
Unless they've gone through foreclosure, the, the district's getting an assessment on each one.
Anyway.
And the question was asked who we, we'd report to, and so I found the circuit clerk of Carroll County has a tab on their website called Recorder, and it says Recorder's office is responsible for plats. So it seems to me the recorder reports to the circuit clerk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just by organization of their website.
The circuit clerk. Well, she has lots of duties, so the Recorder's office is probably one of the duties that she operates in.
That's what I thought, but, you know, in our text then, the question is, who do we record it to? Do we, the plat of the office of Carroll County Circuit Clerk slash Recorder, is that sufficient?
Sounds good.
Or just leave a clerk?
Circuit clerk.
Or is it a clerk and recorder?
Well, it says Washington County Circuit Clerk, so all you need to do is change, so the Carroll County Circuit Clerk.
Yeah.
The county government should be set up the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they changed to Carroll.
All that is determined by the state.
Okay.
Change the word Washington to.
I did, yeah, I put Carroll there.
Oh, you did, okay, good, okay.
Okay, so we'll just say the circuit clerk.
Circuit clerk, just like the county treasurer or the accessory, they're all.
Yeah. And so what happens, I walk into the Barrville Clerk's office, and here's my plat to file, I go, oh, you gotta go to Recorder's office.
Well, that's okay, that'll correct you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Chris, I think that, uh, they have a lot of.
I don't think the Recorder.
In both places.
Yeah, it's in Eureka Springs.
The circuit clerk does.
It's not a like position.
I don't know.
The circuit clerk is a lot.
They can record it.
Well, the other one, the Recorder for Weston River is Eureka Springs, and the Recorder east of the river would be Maryland.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so in addition review, if the planning staff determines there's necessity, the outside sources, again, that'd be the planning commission?
Yeah.
Okay. And this, um, four B, talk about approval signatures, and B, the planning commission action. Approval of the incidental subdivision by the planning commission? In four B.
Not four B, that's just B. A is review, B is action.
I'm sorry, you're right, it's B. Planning commission shall be not constitute acceptance by the public of the dedication. So is it word sitting?
Uh, let's see, notification, action, not permission, show, any, any subdivision, after, true, to do that, set forth.
That kind of implies you need to have, if you have some kind of public hearing. It constitutes the acceptance by the public.
Well, it says does not require.
C, B, does not require.
Yeah. Shall not constitute the acceptance by the public of the dedication.
And when it says shall not constitute the acceptance, that, that, to me, that implies that there's some process that the public must accept.
Absolutely, it goes to city council.
The city council has to approve the acceptance of any dedication.
Right.
Why doesn't it say city council instead of public then?
Well, it's saying that the approval of the subdivision by the planning commission shall not constitute acceptance. In other words, you know, like, there's no process, that's go to the city council.
Yeah, but I, I, I think that it could be clearer by kind of the word public, the city council.
Basically, this contradicts what I said before, that if the planning commission accepts the, the plot plan that states that the streets are gonna be dedicated to the city, then that constitutes the city accepting dedication, that, I, I take that back, because the city council is the only entity that can accept dedication of a street.
So, comment regarding the city council to accept dedication?
I mean, why wouldn't you just replace public with city council?
It's saying that when the planning commission approves the subdivision, subdivision, the acceptance of dedication hasn't happened yet.
Why, why did it say, uh, approval by the planning commission, uh?
Does not constitute acceptance by the city council?
Yeah, or just, some way just boil that down to, uh, I'm approval rest for the city council.
Yeah, I would, I, I agree with Jerry, just, just replace public with city council, and leave everything else the way it was.
Oh, okay.
Now that does.
Yeah.
City council, action.
Oops.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, there you go. See, see addresses.
And I think instead of just the word reviewed, the word, word approved, it'd be better, and see.
Changes from reviewed to approved?
I see.
Subdivision dedicated to that.
Well, that's why I put this note, what if the city council?
It wants to say shall be approved.
It shall be reviewed, and I wrote, what if the city council has a difference of opinion?
Yeah.
That's my question.
Yeah. Just, you know, using an absurd example, if somebody wants to, you know, build a subdivision with two houses in it, and it has fifty miles of street.
There you go.
The city council would say, not no, but, you know, heck no. The city council would say, not no, but, you know, heck no. And it's likely, it's not likely to happen, but it could.
You know, that obviously, if this, if the city council doesn't approve it, it's null and void.
That's right, the plan doesn't go anywhere.
Right.
So rethink the plan.
So it's okay, shall be reviewed, leave it alone?
No, leave it, make it approval.
Well, it says, the action is, they shall approve it by the, we don't want to say that.
We don't want to say that it shall be approved by the city council. That kind of, that says that the city council has no choice but to approve it.
Well, let's say it's-
Reviewed fine, and it can have a positive or negative.
Or expand reviewed for approval or change or whatever, we could expand that.
I don't mean to imply that it's automatically approved, I just thought that just a mere reading of it in the city council is not enough. It has to be approved before it goes through.
You can almost turn that language into B.
No, but B is just, is the action.
B is the planning commission, C is the city council.
I, I like it the way it's written, shall be reviewed by the city council. That's their job to review it.
But isn't the, isn't approval required for them to go through?
It's not approved.
That's right.
So I, I, I'm with Linda, should we add a line on there that says, it's not so until it's approved?
You can do that, yeah.
Well, wait, because the next thing on the recording says if approved, blah blah blah.
Right, but we need to define what the city council action is, it's the approval or denial.
Okay, oh true.
Indicate it could be.
Yeah, I think you could just include that, or approval or denial in that previous sentence, in the two sentences.
Right.
Yeah, for approval or denial, I like that.
There we go.
Okay.
And, and so it says to the city council, you can't change the plan, you can just deny it. And then they gotta go back to the planning commission.
And has to go back and be read.
Either approve the way it is, or deny it the way it is.
Yeah, right, and then you just go down and say if approved, out there just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oops. Okay, I like that. Then the recording, we decide just go to the clerk?
Carroll County, that's the important thing.
And then getting copies of this digital image, so that we can put it on a digital file. I entered the word thumb drive, the old language is CD.
Oh.
Should we just say thumb drive, or is there a better term?
Thumb drive, flash drive.
Flash drive?
Flash drive.
Is flash drive the better term?
Same though.
Yes. Flash storage, electronic storage.
They need to furnish it to us somehow, so we can get it, not email it to us, not a printed copy, we have to scan.
Actually, by saying a digital copy implies-
Right.
Okay.
The, a certain electronic media.
Okay, so just say a digital copy, so if it'll go in an email, we can take it that way?
I think so.
It'd be okay, just a digital copy?
You're gonna take the CD out of there. Yeah, because you're gonna, you're not, you're not gonna keep the flash drive, you're gonna have to download it into a digital file.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they could email us a PDF or something. We are gonna want it in AutoCAD format, we don't do anything with AutoCAD. Maybe we should, but if we had a city engineer, he'd probably have AutoCAD, but then-
That's true, we wouldn't have any, at this point, we have no way of using that font.
I do, but-
You do?
Yeah, the, the, the plan area map, yeah.
Well then, put it in there.
We can open a DWG file.
You're a perfect city engineer. You can go back and put city engineer in all of those fonts.
No, 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 I can, I can open a DWG file, that's all I said I can do. Alright, so it's gonna be in format?
I think that's an Arkansas law somewhere, that he who has AutoCAD is the city engineer.
First, yeah, but then to the, to the who, to the planning commission?
Commission. Or just put your name in there.
Alright.
Another thing, you probably want to take out those references to ordinancees.
I will, yeah, I'll take those out, I just left them in here for, just to illustrate to you that, um, they started in twenty thirteen, and this was revised in seventeen. Okay, so the review criteria then, approval and disapproval of these incidental subdivisions shall be given based on the following threshold guidelines. So this is part of the discussion we had before, whether you have add streets or whatever. It's incidental if there's no new streets, no new public infrastructure, no vacation of properties. It will not result in a significant increase in the public service requirements. There's adequate right of way, easement has, all easements have been satisfied. Lots are created by such split, have public access. There's no, lots are too small, there's no variances needed. So it's only incidental if all these conditions-
So go back to the very first incidental condition.
Because we said we would have dedication.
No, 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 just, just, the list you were just reading.
You want the list?
Yeah.
Okay.
The conditions. Why isn't A in there, I mean, if, if, if a condition of, of approving is that there's no new streets or alleys, why is all that in there about dedication and not dedication?
Right, A included split, uh, street runways though.
Yeah. We're saying that-
That was the question I had originally, is there already there?
Yep.
Yeah, it seems like-
So B one, saying dedicated to the city, doesn't apply under incidental subdivisions?
Yeah, if, if we're gonna deny any, any application, unless this means new streets or alleys that have to be provided by the city, as opposed to the developer building them and then dedicating them.
Ah, yeah. That could be it, that could be what they're talking about.
So should we insert word public?
No new street, no new city constructed streets or alleys. No new public financed infrastructure.
Well, infrastructure is sewer and water.
Sewer and water.
We need to at least.
Storm sewers. I, I, you know, I wouldn't, I don't think just putting public in there, because that still, you know, what we want to differentiate is between, contractor built versus city built.
Right.
I like city constructed.
Yeah, city constructed.
Sounds good.
Streets or alleys.
Do we have alleys? Or is that, just in case we might have alley?
Some, I would consider that road behind the, uh, Mariachi's is an alley.
One that's not a public road.
Right. It's an alley, it's between properties, but it's got cement on it, it's a pay belly.
Alright, I'm okay with the rest of the list.
Okay. That's the end of this section.
Right.
So if we put this in place, I think this is enough. I think this is enough to meet the requirement of the statute that says we have to have instructions on what they have to do to get them filed, and whatever with the county. This will cover that piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
For most situations, we, for nearly all situations, we can have out here.
For the ones we've tried to identify.
Yep.
So the only work that I really have to do is figure out what these sections point to, and what we may or may not be doing with that section of the code.
So where would a pud come in the law?
Well, that's the other piece, that's the thirteen pages. It's the intent of this section, encourage the development of severe living requirements while protecting existing and future surrounding areas. Flexibility design is to create open spaces for recreation, protect natural features, environmentally stable character for the surrounding development.
So none of the properties that are within our current city limits could be considered a pud? Is that what we're saying?
I think there's properties inside of city limits that could be developed, and it would be under the PUD regulations.
So are we gonna have to tackle this one?
Yeah, that's why I have a list.
Output is eventually.
To me, it's next, that's why I proposed it today.
Okay, next month?
I, I was gonna say, not in my lifetime, but-
Somebody call the fire department.
The, uh, the chances of somebody coming to us and saying, I wanna put in a, uh, you know, fifty unit subdivision, is pretty slim, but, you know.
Well, I would, Dan, I would point out that, that, that parcel behind the coffee thing that we talked about a couple times, that's been in the minds of a couple people trying to buy that to develop that into tiny homes or-
Yeah.
You know, another subdivision, so.
Yeah, I think that, I think that, um-
So that, that's a possibility right there.
Yeah.
Well, this acreage we talked about, that's down there off of, off of Pleasant Ridge. Someone might say, you know, really, we need, if I put a street through here, I could make this into thirty lots instead of five.
Yeah.
And it's only right up here where it gets really steep.
Right, you come off of this road, and right here, there's a road, there's a path already up the hill here to this building.
Yeah, and even though we, even though we may be familiar with the intentions of the current owner, that could change with one bill of sale. So, yeah, it, there are, there are properties in Holiday Island that certainly are developable yet.
Then I think we need to get right on that.
That was why it's in this page in this list, PUDs, we've been skipping over it for two years. Because it's stuff that we, I don't know if we're necessarily technically able to evaluate the deck, so we talk about, what streets should look like, and we talk about the need for a city engineer.
The mayor just appointed you the city engineer.
I'm not your man.
Well, you get a pay rate if you're, as you dated as an engineer.
That's right.
Only if you agree to his salary rate. So do you want to work on it today, or you want to put it off until another meeting?
I would put it off till another meeting, it's one quarter.
Quarter eleven.
It's quarter twelve.
Are you gonna have a work session next month for the planning commission?
It's quarter twelve.
I've got a work session. I mean, you could have considered this a work session, not really.
Right, it is a work session, for, other than approving minutes for business. So I'm done with the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, moving on to the agenda then, we can discuss when we want to tackle the next thing.
Yeah.
And scheduling. Plan, um, public comments, Al, had anything to say?
Uh, I used to live in a pud, if somebody wants an example of one, or, outside of Houston, you have different water districts, and some were muds, municipal utility districts, and some were puds, public utility districts.
I think pud in our definition is planned unit development.
Yeah, I mean, that was, if you're on across the word pud in Texas.
Alright, commissioner comments. You're in now, move on, regular meeting, special meeting, or workshop? Do you want to wait until next month, or do we want to have a, a extra meeting?
We have a workshop, we could have it on the agenda, vote on at the regular meeting.
Okay. When do we want to have a workshop?
And again, it would be, we'd do the workshop, and then whatever we do, we have to do this publicly, because we're recommended changing regulations. So it'd be another public hearing, once we figure out what the language looks like.
We could do it like we did last time, do it by meeting slash public hearing.
Right.
So I'd say workshop.
Yeah, you know, I, when I went through this, I don't think there's, you did get highlighted versions of that document, of those thirteen pages. I don't think there's a whole bunch in there that's gonna be controversial for us, or something we have to work on understanding. Maybe in one workshop, we can do the thirteen pages, we haven't done.
You want to do that with my eighth?
We've got fire auxiliary, we have fire auxiliary in that thing.
Yeah, what?
Fire auxiliary, if you want to do it as one thirty, I can do.
Two o'clock? What's for me?
Two o'clock.
Twenty eight, March? Two o'clock?
March twenty eighth for us civilians.
It has to be after one thirty, so.
Two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
I can't even spell.
Okay, I wrote down that, March twenty eighth, two P M. We have some workshop to work on, this language called planned unit development.
Okay, and then our regular-
Can we use documents, or are we gonna send out?
I'll, well, I'll, I'll create a new work document.
Okay.
It'll be just this document.
Okay.
And anything else, I think, supports what we need to work on.
Then the next regular meeting is the eleventh.
March, April second, yeah, the next regular meeting, April eleventh.
Back at the regular time?
Yeah, one P M. That's what we're playing for.
Two days after Easter, everybody can bring their Easter candy to the meeting and share it with me. Because I'm not gonna give it in my office. Alright, motion to adjourn?
Somebody?
Jerry made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And the second ended, ended discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose for adjourned.